Okay, we do have the agenda that's been provided and advertised. Is there any modifications to our agenda tonight? Okay, well, I got ahead of myself here, I'm sorry. We've got to establish a quorum. So let's establish a quorum. Please call the room.
Mr. Woodville.
President.
Chair.
Here. Here.
Here.
Brad.
All right, thank you. So we've established a quorum. Now we'll move to the approval of the agenda. Any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda as presented. So I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you for that. We have our minutes from our July 25, 2024 meeting at 6:30. The clerk has prepared these minutes. Is there any concerns or questions of the board of these minutes?
Motion.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the clerk?
So move.
And a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, this time we do have our public comments time. Does anyone that would like to come up will give you up to five minutes to speak? Anyone that'd like to speak tonight? Yes, sir. Please come up and once you start, please state your name.
Mark, I've got a question.
Please state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm Jim.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Jim.
Yes, sir.
Mark, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have your enabling law there?
I believe I do, Mr. Jim. Now, I'll make sure. Yes, sir, I've got a copy.
Okay, go to page six. And we're going to be looking at section 10. And we're going to look at the first sentence.
Sentence in section 10.
Okay.
Okay, you got it?
Yep.
Okay. The first sentence says this. "The chairperson shall administer the affairs and day-to-day business of the county and preside over the business of..." "over the meetings of the board." Okay. Now, so it's got two points right there it's telling us. Now, on that first point, you've already told me that you, the board, you have authority to go through the necessary steps and replace the chairperson of the day-to-day business. Okay? At a previous meeting, you told me that.
Yes, sir. I told you... Let me clarify that for just a little bit.
Okay.
I did tell you that through home rule, which was established by legislation and given to the... all the counties of the state of Georgia, they do have that ability to actually do... to put in a county manager if we choose to. By home rule, yes, we do. Yes, sir.
Okay. I agree with that, if you choose to.
Yes.
But I want to focus in on this second point right here. Preside over the meeting of the board. That's the chairperson. Now, if you can replace the chairperson on point number one here, do you believe you have the governing authority to replace him on presiding over the meetings?
That's a good question. And that would be a question for an attorney. I don't really know that we do or not, to be honest with you. I just do know that... and this was all stimulated from just trying to understand what... when we went from a sole commissioner to a board, what really changed. And then you've been persistent on asking about wanting a document that can't be changed, you know, that the chairman... and I did have an answer for you. I just wanted to tell you on that is if you go back and think about it, the Constitution of the United States of America has been amended, I think, some 27 times. So I don't believe that there's a document that cannot be amended in some shape, form, or fashion by somebody at some...
I agree.
Okay.
Within limits.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. But do you have a personal opinion about this second point? If you don't have a legal opinion, I'm just asking for a personal opinion. Preside over the meetings of the board. In other words, if you thought you had the governing authority, this board could pass, amend the law, and then tell Shannon, hey, he's going to move over here to end of the table, and you would take over his seat.
I don't know where you come up with that. I've never seen anything about taking over anybody's seat there. That's kind of a misconception. And what I will say, you've asked for my opinion, I'm going to give it to you.
Okay.
So by the Enabling Act, it does specifically state those specific duties.
Yeah.
And so if a county manager form was put in by us or any other board that may choose to in the future, I don't know that that would... that would not be directly affected the day-to-day management and the affairs of the day-to-day operations. And my opinion would be that the elected chair would still preside over the meetings, prepare the budget, and prepare the agenda as prescribed on these other items below that you're well aware of. That's my opinion.
Okay. I see my time's up. I better sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Laura Beth Newsom, the coordinator for Walker Family Connection. If I don't know any of you, tonight I'm here to ask for a donation for Teen Mays. If you're not familiar with what Teen Mays is, it's a... all 10th grade students in Walker County come to this. So we see about 900... 800 to 900 students a year, about 2,000 total from Walker, Dade, Chautauqua, and Catoosa Counties. And this event happens at the Colonnade. Historically, Walker County Commissioner's Office has given $7,500 for this. I've asked for that for the last two years, and we haven't received it. And last year, they kind of... they... Catoosa had enough money to carry us. But unfortunately, that's not going to last forever. So I'm here tonight to ask you guys to consider donating to Teen Mays. If it's too late for this year, I am trying to get other... I mean, we do ask for donations from others. But again, this does every student in Walker County, Chickamauga City, even the private schools in the school... in the county can come to this. Homeschool families can come. So it is something that goes for every family. I have the information in here about Teen Mays. It's, again, just... if you're welcome to look at it. It does have the... let me give it to you guys. The information. And it has the past. So do you have any questions? Eric, do you guys all know... do you know what Family Connection is? Everybody? Okay. Do you know... I serve the whole county, so it's not... I serve birth... I call it birth-to-death. So I work with families who need resources. But this is one of the initiatives that we work with together is Teen Mays. And so do you have... any of you guys been to Teen Mays?
I have no.
Have you... you've never been?
I'm aware of it.
Yeah. So do you have any questions?
Did you accomplish for all of us there? Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
I don't. I'm sorry, because I have sent multiple emails to the commissioner asking...
I can see that.
Sorry.
Can we keep this one?
Oh, that's for you guys.
And we'd love to look at it. I personally would love to look at it and get some more information.
Yeah, I can email it.
Yeah, you guys... Commissioner Whitfield, you should have a history of the donations that you have always provided. So is... you have any... and we'd love to have you guys come see it if you guys have a time.
Historically, what has been the amount of the donations?
7,500.
Thought that's what you said.
Yes, sir.
So do you provide services such as food, clothing?
Yes, I coordinate all those services. I work with the DFAX, DJJ, the Sheriff's Department, the school system, the daycares. So to coordinate, you know, from... we just had Kids' Day at the Civic Center. That was a walk... a Family Connection event. We served 1,300 children at that event with backpacks and... yeah, so...
Very nice.
Yep. So we would love... like I said, this is just something... the focus of Teen Mays is on risky behaviors. So it's vaping, drug use, texting and driving, just poor choices. 10th graders are at a hard age. We probably should back up and punt... I know you and I talked about this, about vaping, starting at an earlier age with some intervention. And we do have several programs available for that that I've kind of... Family Connection is a one person. There's not a... there's not... it's a voluntary board that I work with, so... but anyway, we have looked into some programs that could help even younger. And I've been in contact with Chickamauga City Schools about rolling that out, so... any other questions? Thank you for your consideration.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to be next? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carolyn Walker, the Tax Commissioner of Walker County. I'm here for a question. You're supposedly approving the budget tonight?
No.
No.
You're not approving it. Well, mine has had significant changes, and I've heard nothing from anyone, and I just want to say that I need to discuss it before it's changed. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
I'm Rick Kellin. I've lived here in Walker County for about 10 years now. Moved here from Texas to escape the hurricanes. Five was enough for me, especially when they came through my front door of my house. Walker County is probably one of the most beautiful places I've ever been. I've been all over the United States as a minister and as a businessman. And I have friends of mine who have come to visit me. And to be quite frank with you, I have two entire families moving from Anchorage, Alaska to Lafayette within the next 60 days. And some other friends of mine down in Texas who have also gotten tired of hurricanes have seen pictures of Walker County and said, "That place has got to be gorgeous." And it is. It is. This is one of the most beautiful places I've ever been. It's equivalent to, in my opinion, Walker County's equivalent to Cades Cove and the Great Smoky Mountains. We've got a beautiful place. We need to keep our taxes under control. I listened to you last night going over it, and I appreciate the fact that you're mentioning that the tax rate is going down, but the amount of money is going up. And for guys like me that are retired, one reason why I've not been at the commission meetings is because I've been sick for the last three and a half years. For people that are retired, the taxes have to be kept under control, and spending has to be kept under control. And one area where I see that I have a lot of questions about is with our school board. Rather than put a rubber stamp on the school board's budget, I believe this commission has a responsibility to the citizens to go line item by line item and decide whether or not that bloated budget, that bureaucratic bloated budget, could be cut. Teachers deserve good pay. But when you... when you see... one of the things that I saw when I moved here was an abandoned high school building that they allowed the gymnasium literally to collapse. That's not good government. That's not good management of anything. If I ran a company and I allowed the hard assets of that company to fall into disrepair and be condemned, that wouldn't make me a very good manager, would it, Shannon? We need to... we need this board to not rubber stamp the school board's budget. We need them to go over it and see where things can be cut, because the greatest majority of my taxes are going to be the school board budget. And I'm 69 years old. I don't have kids in school. My sister lives in Catoosa County. She doesn't have to pay school taxes. But I'm in Walker County. And I'm just asking that you not rubber stamp the school board's budget. Because I believe if we look at all the details, we'll find a lot of places where it can be cut without cutting services and without cutting teacher salaries and even giving teachers a better situation. The teachers are the prime aspect. I'm a writer. I'm a writer. I've published four novels. I've got four more that are fixing to go to the publisher. I look back on my... on my school, and it's elementary and high school, where I was given these tools to be able to go to college, where I was given the tools to be able to manage multimillion-dollar companies, where I was given the tools to be able to do what I've done in my life. And it's the classroom teacher, not the 572 administrators sitting in offices that get the job done. And I believe we can cut out of that budget, out of that school budget, significant portions and bring it back in into control. Because personally, I believe the school board budget is out of control. Because they're not questioned. Their budget is basically rubber stamped, and we need that stopped. We need this board to be conscientious, as conscientious about the school board's budget portion of our property taxes as what they are about the property taxes that the county receives. And like I said, I love working... living in Walker County. I love living in Lafayette. This is a great town and a great county. It's a beautiful place to live. And I plan on staying here the rest of my days. As a matter of fact, I've got a church building we're remodeling, still remodeling here in the city of Lafayette for an international ministry to be headquartered out there. And we're reaching into all the world for Walker County, from Lafayette, Georgia. And I think as a place to live, you can't get any better than right here. This is my new hometown, and I plan on staying here. But if you do that, one thing, I appreciate it.
I'm Robbie Tate, and I just want to echo his comments about the beauty of our county. I also want to echo his comments about the out-of-control spending by the school board. But I think he's at the wrong meeting. I don't think this authority or board has any authority...
We don't.
...to examine the school board's budget.
That's correct.
But on that note, we recently had a school board member retire. And two weeks ago on Thursday night, they interviewed five candidates that wanted to be a replacement considered for. And then on Tuesday... Monday night, they had three more, one dropped out. And I was the only person in the audience that listened to these interviews. Okay? I didn't have any input. I sat there and I heard what they had to say. So, you know, if... I'm mad about our school board and our taxes. I think it's outrageous. And, you know... but we're at the wrong meeting for that, and we need to start going to the school board meetings. And we need to get involved. There's going to be a special election on the 5th to replace that person that is filled in the temporary. Well, they could run for it as an incumbent now. There's going to be a school board meeting on the same day as our general election. And that's where we need to start making changes. We just had two lame duck school board members vote to extend the contract of the... Damon Rains, the superintendent, who doesn't live in this county, by the way, and whose children attended school in Catoosa County. I think if you're going to be a superintendent of Walker County Schools, you ought to be a resident in Walker County. That's not why I came tonight, so I'll switch horses. I came to talk to y'all about Foster Mill Drive. I think y'all know it's been in bad shape. I know it's on the list to be resurfaced. But the recent project at the airport where the city redid the runway, they hauled off all the millings, they hauled in church. That road is not designed to withstand that kind of traffic. If you go down Foster Mill Drive, pass Gasky Drive, between Gasky Drive and Shattuck Industrial, the county went out and put up some road signs that says, "Use caution, road hazard." That's how bad it is. I don't think resurfacing is even an option for that portion of the road. I saw some people from Walker County sign the thing that's from the road department. But that... that road's going to have to be took down and all the way down to the bed and replaced in like five different areas. And I think that the commission needs to be speaking to the city council about putting some of the money into that, because it was their project that had these trucks go down there, and they made it worse. It's been bad. It needed to be paved for years. I've talked to Robert about it before. The potholes, they just come and they spray, and it rains, or it gets cold and water freezes and pops right back up. But that's... that's one thing I'm here about. I'm also here to ask the commissioners that when people come in and they ask a question, we don't ever know what the response is. We watch at home. We get to hear the questions, but we don't know if they're answered or not. They may be answered, but the questions are posed in a public forum. I think the answers ought to be published at a public forum, maybe before the audience comes up and speaks, because I may pose something to you tonight and have a follow-up after you give me a response the next week. So I think that someone needs to be tasked with answering the questions and then reading it into the minutes, what the response is, and not just leave us out here hanging. Mr. McNabb, I don't know him, but he's been at numerous meetings. As far as I know, none of his questions have been answered. I watch the meetings. You may be answering him, but you're not answering all the people at home. So I have a lot more to say, but I'll go ahead and wrap it up with that. I think that's enough for now.
Melissa Halsey. Last month, the city of Rossville, and I have receipts right here, collected $860 in rent for the Rossville Gym. I know that we're doing that inter-county city agreement. Governmental agreement. And a suggestion would be to take this rent money and apply it towards utilities. I know that the county has agreed to pay utilities. That would make this rent money transparent. Everybody would know where it was going. It would lower the cost to the county. It would be no cost to the city of Rossville, and I think that that could be a win-win for everybody as we're talking about raising taxes. You know, this is over $10,000 a year, and I think that would be a prudent and wise thing to do if you all are open to that suggestion. Moving forward, I hope that we can all learn a lesson from what has happened in Rossville. And I choose to, from this moment, focus on the future. Mr. Askew touched on this at the last meeting, and I thank you for your insight in terms of reviewing the policy for all community centers and making that more efficient. When helping my husband with this campaign, we tried to reserve the Rising Fawn and the High Point Community Center. It was nearly impossible to navigate that. And by the time I found out who to call, it was... the time had passed, and, you know, we... we just missed out on hosting these. So these facilities are a great asset to Walker County, and in my opinion, they are also greatly underutilized. And should a community member, any community member, wish to host a birthday party, a baby shower, a business meeting, or any type of event, I think the following should be made available to them. First of all, it should be well-published and easy to find for how to reserve these facilities. It should have equal access to all residents. I think the cost should be consistent with all facilities, so you look it up and you know what you have to pay. I think there should be a portal in which the county receives the money for these facilities, and that's going to alleviate any issues like, again, we had at the Rossville facility. And also, I think county resources should be equally allocated. For... I would like to again say that CenterPost does not even have Wi-Fi. You can't get cellphone service out there. I attended several meetings out there, and they host this music event. If an emergency were to happen and someone were to need to dial 911, there's one landline, and it doesn't always operate. That's $200 a month approximately to put Wi-Fi in a community center, and that's a huge safety issue. And in the meantime, this board cannot even tell me how much money is being spent on the renovations in Rossville. I've been told that we don't do a PO system, and we don't track things, which as an accounting person, I find that very hard to believe, but, you know, I'll take what's given to me. So I just think an overview of all the community centers, fair, consistent, would be prudent. And while this issue cannot be solved overnight, I hope that this will be addressed in the future, and a more equitable policy will be held for Walker County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Scott.
I'll let y'all pass it around. You can throw it away, whatever. I just... I'm kind of concerned still with the intergovernment agreement thing. I know, hey, we got the budget, and that's awesome. You guys make it happen. But this intergovernment agreement, I'm still got a few things here that I'm not quite understanding completely. I've had people read it, and it's not... I don't think it's just me. To start with, at one of the meetings, probably two meetings ago or so, it was brought up that under the premises, there was going to be an Exhibit A showing what property is involved in this so-called give-me-or-whatever we're doing. It's all good. But I think it needs to be a document with this attached showing the property that's involved, because if you look at the tax map right now, the line, it includes the Bandroom Building, which my understanding, when I read this, that's not included. So I think a little clarification along with this document, and that way, we don't have the same problem we've had since 2008, throwing all this document around and it not being what we need. I'm sure it's a working document. I see that. But I think we've worked it a whole lot, but I think we're trying to push it very, very quick, and I'm not sure why. If they're collecting the rent already, what's the big hurry? I mean, I'm not following what's the big deal. We're still going to pay the utilities. We're still going to do all the upkeep. It's basically the same as it has been, except for a little bit of verbiage. So I'm just asking, maybe count the lines down when you get to the intergovernment agreement. I guess it would be line three. That one really does bother me. It says, "The city uses the premises to provide recreational activities for citizens of all ages who..." I'm not making this up. "...who reside within the city limits." So that'd be Rosvillians. And also county residents, which means Walker County. So the way I read that, that says only Walker County residents and city of Rossville people can use that facility. Maybe I'm reading something that I'm not seeing, or I'm not reading what I'm supposed to see, but I think there needs to be some clarification on several of these line items. Back to the school board, awesome thought, because I used to try to go occasionally, and they just started letting you in the meetings within the last year or two, so that's a problem. I mean, enjoy it. You need to go. I mean, it's very enlightening sometimes. But I've been to a couple, and at least they're letting us in, so that's a start. Oh, gosh. How much time? Oh. I'll stop at that, but like I said, I want everybody to read this thing again one more time before... because I'm not going to stop. The last meeting I was at, did we say this was good to go?
We had the financial...
Financial reporting and a lot changing and all.
I got that. But did the board vote this document as I see it today?
We said we did. We sent it to Rossville to have them vote on it and come back with... to us with what they...
Okay. That's it.
That's what I thought. Thank you, guys.
Jamie Halsey. I will say, Rust, any kind of contract, particularly what all it's been through, is probably about as wrong as you can get versus making it right. There's so many things left out there. That's not what I'm talking about, but that's significant to me and experiences. That's how things get confused and get the way they were in the past, so I don't appreciate that. What I do want to talk about is there's a material inaccuracy in the minutes from last month. And it's in section 5, where Mr. Hart spoke out and said... talked about the $1.2 million in the 2020 splash. I don't see the $1.2 million in here. And said, "We decided to split that between the Ag Center and the county agent's office." county agent's office." Okay, number one, did y'all meet prior to this? And who is "we"? Who is "we" who decided to do that? That significant amount of dollars, you'd think, be at a commission meeting, say, "We got $1.2 million. Let's vote on this." Number two is, was $600,000 of that supposed to be allocated to the county agent's office in the 20s splash? Number three is, the county agents in this little bitty office in a building amongst other folks? We participated in many events. A lot of events happened in that Ag Center. But I'll be damned, if we're spending as much on a county agent that's not paid or employed by the county versus the use of the Ag Center and putting $1.2 million in there for the rent and everything else in the world, I'm suspicious of, not only suspicious, but curious who and why that decision was made. Plus, two, I don't recall that being on the agenda for that last meeting. So, on top of that, related to that, we do budget and pay for the corner. Is the corner being housed yet? No, but we're housing a county agent, you know, not part of the county. So I'd like to answer to that, the compliance part of that, and who is "we" and who decided to do that, and why it wasn't on the agenda, and where we are on the corner's office. Another thing that came up within that arena is the two AC units that were put at the Ag Center. I don't recall that being on the agenda. I don't recall that being given the Friday prior to this last board meeting. Okay, y'all familiar with Resolution R-028-22? Y'all give me a nod?
Yep.
Resolution R-028-22.
Off the top of my head, I'm not. Could you clarify?
Yes, sir. R-028-22 is a resolution that y'all approved that says, "You'll provide the agenda and supporting documents on the Friday prior to the week of the commission meeting." Okay? And what's that for? It's not for your use. It's for the public's use. Okay? For us to study, look at, ask questions, be prepared to when we come. Okay? Not only were those two air conditioners not on there, or the splitting of $600,000, which appropriate not based on the 2020 splash, even the meeting before last, all the supporting document was not posted on the Friday prior to the following week's commission meeting. That whole meeting was out of compliance based on your resolution. So I'm curious. I'd like to answer on that. Is that meeting null and void? Because you broke your own resolution to provide the public the information prior to the meeting. Is the two air conditioners out of compliance? Is the $600,000 out of compliance, and the $600,000 out of compliance based on the splash? And why the heck we're not putting more into that Ag Center versus a county agent in the side of this one building? I'd like to have answers to that, and everybody may. You know, there's this old saying I grew up with, is always said, "If you hide something, you might not ought to be doing it." And that's a lot of what we're getting. You know, the Constitution, Acts, and Amendments throughout government, you're supposed to be open. There's only very few things, and examples, asking questions at the meetings, Open Records Acts, that I don't know how many times, that's out of compliance with the three-day return on the information, and caught maybe not being told truthful that something was hidden and finally had it. So I'm not understanding this hiding makes people suspicious. And it's way beyond the Constitution, Acts, and Amendments of this country, locally, statewide, and nationally.
Jamie, do you have the date when that resolution was passed?
Yeah, 22.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Come on up.
I'm Ned Yates. I'm going to tell y'all a story. I'll tell y'all a story. It applies to our local situation. There was a sheep herder, I'm going to call his name, is Elroy. He had some sheep flock. He had his children's favorite pet was named Cashmere, prize-coated, softer, and all the rest of them. The problem was the scallywags and carpetbaggers were stealing valuable items, raiding the community and stealing items. There was a man that was recognized and appreciated by everyone, that was influential, benevolent leader in the area. His name was Stuart. Well, Stuart learned about the scallywags and carpetbaggers' plan to plunder and their arrival time, and their objectives, which one of the principal objectives was to take Cashmere, because it was such a valuable animal, potentially, immediately, and potentially. Elroy and him had been friends all their lives. He also recognized that Elroy was unable to protect his property. So Stuart took the initiative and secured Cashmere, the fancy goat, we'll say it was a goat, because it's Cashmere, I guess, and so that it would not be stolen by the scallywags. However, a lot of people started malicious comments, gossips, rumors, that Nathan, another man that was friends with both Stuart and Elroy. And the gossip was that Stuart coveted Cashmere for his coat, and that Elroy was incompetent to secure his children's pet. Nathan, being a loyal friend of those people, approached Stuart with this knowledge, and also a suggestion for the means to quench these unsavory rumors. His solution was that Stuart explained publicly his action to protect his best friend's prized possessions. Well, I overheard an extremely disturbing rumor. And it upset me greatly. And it was, I live alone, so I'm not in, but I was in some public places and overheard this. And a couple different places, different people accused the commissioners of possibly shredding records from the business records of the county, which I find extremely difficult to believe. And I want that quell stopped. I don't want to hear it again. And I've got a suggestion I want to suggest, is it's a direct, efficient means to quell, immediately quell, any such disparaging rumor about y'all, about my government, y'all representatives. And my recommendation is, tonight, each commissioner in his closing comment, give his word at the end of the meeting in your comments, that there will be no future destruction, alteration, secreting, or deleting of any history of our documents of the county government. You know, and, you know, they're influenced by y'all even. But this action, in my opinion, this action will quench unsavory, disparaging gossip, rumors, upsetting, you can just, whatever, as if you want to put on there, and give the citizens the means to quench and quell any such disturbing, unsavory, disparative gossip. And I'm very upset with that. You know, and I want each one of y'all to, I'm not trying to accuse you. I just was concerned that, I'm not sure that I had the right word in this environment. I was extremely upset when I heard this, and I don't want to hear it anymore. And I know it's within y'all's power to address that today. So it's public record. It's on film. And here it is. Any citizen can say, "Stop this nonsense." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Travis Middleton. Hey, I'm just coming to you guys. I've been doing a little research. And I'm trying to figure out, Hal Gray was a member of the Walker Police. I got a resolution. He became a member of the Walker Police on November 10 of 2022. He resigned on September 5 of 2023. But just a couple weeks ago, we, as the county, sent him to a summer training conference at a tune of about $2,500. So it was $1,600 for the lodging, $300 for the food, and then, there's something else, oh, $600 for the conference. So I guess my question is, is Hal Gray on the Walker Police? Is he a contractor? What exactly is Hal Gray? And why are we sending him to this conference if he's no longer employed since September the 2 of 2023? That's my first thing. My second thing is, I went by the city barn this week, or the county barn, I should say, I'm sorry, and I noticed all of this fire equipment at the county barn. And it looked like, I counted around 20 or 22 pieces, 22 engines, fire apparatuses, those kinds of things. Are those things out of service? I guess I'll ask Blake. Are those things out of service?
Yes, sir.
2010, my house burned to the ground. I live 1.2 miles from Chattanooga Valley Fire Department. Burned to the ground. Walker County is one of the largest counties in the state of Georgia. And I don't feel confident in the fire department being able to respond if we have 20 pieces of equipment out of service. Are they out of service? So they're out of service. I guess, is there a plan for that? And how soon will those things be back in service? That's all I got.
Good. Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move forward on our agenda. Okay, the next item is the presentation of the FY 2025 General Fund Budget and the FY 2025 Enterprise Fund and Special Revenue Budget of the Governing Authority of Walker County. We do have those available. There should be copies back there in the back. And then also, we will have all of this information up on our website in the morning for everyone to review. It's a lot of documentation. The general fund is 50 pages, and then the enterprise, special revenue funds, another 31 pages, which you'll also be able to find on the website, previous year budgets that go back several years. Some people often ask why it stops where it stops. That's all we were able to find records of. Same thing with past audits. We have all of the audits listed on the website, all the way back to 1996. But that's as far back as we've been able to locate. And so if any of you know of anybody that may have audits or budgets that go back older than that, we would love to scan them and have a copy of those, so we can keep those on our website for everyone to be able to look back over time. Unfortunately, prior administrations, and technology has changed, you know, never archived those on a website or anything electronically. So we just don't have them. So the budget that is being submitted tonight and proposed is a $1,409,178 increase over the current budget, which is 4.24% of an increase. And so the FY '24 General Fund Budget was $33,273, excuse me, $33,273,368. The FY '25 General Fund Budget is $34,682,546. And this summary that I'm reading here is also will be available electronically. Couple of things I wanted to point out is our dependency on property taxes. Fortunately, with other revenue streams being up a little bit each year, your county government's dependency on property taxes has been decreasing. And so I've listed just the most current three years. So in FY '23 budget, our dependency on property taxes from the 2022 property taxes was 44.636%. And 2024 budget, from the 2023 property taxes, our dependency was 41.504% of the budget. Our proposed FY 2025 budget projections, that will be reduced down to 40.585% of your 2024 property taxes. So that's a drop of over 4% dependency on property taxes over just the last three years alone. And so with this budget proposal, this will also incorporate a full rollback, as the state looks at it, where our tax increase this year will be zero. And so we're doing a full rollback of the millage to show that we're not having a tax increase. So as an example, I saw online a little before the meeting, the Walker County School Board is advertising or proposing up to a 7% increase. We're not advertising any increase because we're not having an increase, is what's being proposed. So typically, when we have had to do a proposed increase, because we didn't roll the millage rate all the way back, like last year, we rolled it back a lot, but we didn't roll it back the entire amount, we still had to advertise it because we were receiving more money off the taxes. So some of you may wonder, well, when are we going to have the morning meeting that we typically have at the Civic Center or the millage hearing? We won't have that. There's no need to have that. It's not required because we're not increasing. And then we're normally required to have one in the morning. We're not going to have to have it. There won't be one in the evening, because we're going to be at zero, the way the state has us calculate revenue from property taxes. So our dependency's less on property taxes, and we're having a zero property increase. Okay, so when you look at the overall budget from our different departments and elected officials, our actual spending is going to be $2,709,178. A lot of what is driving that increase in spending is there is a proposed 4% pay increase for our employees. So that, we have a lot of employees, and that also dominoes into the taxes and the other benefits that are driven by payroll. But remember, again, our budget's only going up $1.4 million. So the way we're able to accomplish this impartial is that we paid off that bond. So here, a few meetings back, two, three meetings back, this board voted to pay off the industrial bond 10 years early. We had a five-year call on that bond. So as I've noted in this letter here, that's freed up $1.3 million of cash flow over the next 10 years, because that's debt service we don't have anymore. So look at it like when you pay your house off. If your house payment's $1,000 a month, you pay your house off, now you've got an extra $1,000 a month. Well, we've got an extra $1.3 million a year to be able to use for other priorities in the budget, and it not going to pay debt. We can actually invest it in our people. So I did a summary there of just three years of the millage rate. And you'll see in the unincorporated area, in 2023, our millage rate last year was 5.735 mills. To do that full rollback, we'll be at 5.328 mills. And we have verified that with the assessor's office. The Board of Assessors have verified and voted that that is the full millage rate rollback, where the unincorporated area is 5.328 mills. Then in the incorporated area, or the cities, in 2023, it was 7.39 mills. The rollback rate this year for 24 is 7.027 mills. So naturally, you think, why is there a difference? And the reason there is a difference is the insurance tax premium money that the county gets, and we only get that refund from unincorporated properties. That is, and another way to look at that is like a franchise fee or tax that insurance companies have to pay to the state. They take those funds once a year, and they distribute those back out to every city and every county. every county in the state. So the county, for many, many years, long before I got here, adopted the approach of taking that insurance tax credit money and rolling back the property taxes in the unincorporated area. So, the cities have that option as well. Uh, and one example, in, in the past 25 years plus, I think, the city of Chickamauga doesn't have a property tax at all, so they do a 100% rollback. But every city's different. So I just wanted to give that summary and let everybody understand, we are bringing this back. The five-year digest that's required to be advertised will be in the paper next week, and so you can see that five-year history. Reason I didn't include it, as of, uh, late yesterday, that wasn't completed yet, and the reason for that is the Board of Assessors didn't vote on their final digest until Tuesday. And so the information come over to us that afternoon, our county department's been working through verifications, and we just couldn't get it done quick enough before this meeting, because it's, it's only been a couple of days, and with other things going on, we just haven't got that. But we'll, you'll be able to see that digest, so there's nothing that we're hiding, uh, it will be in the paper next Wednesday, but I just don't have it here tonight. As soon as we get it, we'll have it on our website as well. So going forward, we are doing the required advertisements in the paper, the legal organ, which is for us, is Walker County Messenger. So on August the 22nd, the millage rate will be adopted by the Board of Commissioners. So my recommendation to the board is that we adopt the unincorporated area at 5.328 mills, and in the incorporated area, 7.027 mills, and the budget supports those. Then also, on August 22nd, we will have our first budget public hearing on the entire budget, on that same night. And then we will have a second budget hearing on September the 12th, which is our regular scheduled meetings. Both of those are our regular scheduled meetings, here in this facility, at 6:30. So those are just regular meetings. And then also, the board, uh, will be in a position, after that public hearing, hopefully our plan is, would be to adopt the entire budget on September the 12th. So we'll have a public hearing on the 22nd of August, and a public hearing on September 12th, and approve and finalize the budget on that date. So that gives, you know, almost a month for everybody to review the budget, contact commissioners, talk about this, we'll have two public hearings, so we have a period of time to go through all this. So there's no, won't be any action taken on the budget, no earlier than September the 12th. And the board at that time could table it, if there's questions or issues even at then, and could do it at the next meeting, but the, the earliest it would be, would be September the 12th. So, tonight, I'm not gonna go into all of these pages in detail, because I think most of you want to be home before then, and so, but it all is, is available, and it's been completed and compiled, and, uh, for your review. Okay. At this time, we have a request from the District Attorney's Office to reallocate some funding in the FY 24 budget, of some surplus funds for their budget for a one-time retention supplement. So, Mr. Kevin, come up and introduce yourself, and tell everyone your acting role.
Yes, sir.
And the floor is yours.
Chairman Whitfield and members of the board, my name is Kevin Ball. I'm the acting district attorney. Your elected district attorney, Clayton Fuller, many of you may know, some of you may not know, he's been deployed overseas as part of his military obligation. So I'm filling in for him, I've been filling in in that capacity since May. I'll be, hopefully, he'll be returning to us in November, and I can return to my chief assistant duties at that point. I wish I was, I'm, I thank the board for the opportunity to speak with y'all this evening. I wish it was under better circumstances. I know some of y'all heard from me in the initial budget hearing back this summer, but to be honest with y'all, we are in the middle of the greatest personnel crisis our office has ever faced. Uh, last year, we lost six assistant district attorneys and the elected district attorneys, so a total of seven attorneys, of course. The elected DA became a judge, Judge Arndt. It's, it's more of the six assistants that we lost to other jobs in prosecution. And you can understand losing attorneys to private practice, everybody understands that you make more in private practice, but it was a real challenge and real difficulty for us that we lost to other jobs in prosecution. I know y'all, I'm trying, I'll try to be succinct, I know it's been a late evening, but I know y'all know from the news, the name Fonny Willis, she's the Fulton County District Attorney. Two of our attorneys went to work for her, she has an entire division, uh, that across the state is a telework division. In other words, they don't have to go to court and try cases, uh, they don't have to, uh, deal with, uh, the public. They draft a fraction of the workload that our people have, and they make the same amount of money, or at least they did last year. And that was, uh, pretty difficult for us to compete with. Uh, the others, uh, worked in other circuits, and, and just so y'all know how it works, as you get closer to Atlanta, the, the prosecuting attorneys council sets a unified pay scale, the sort of the minimum the prosecutors make. The closer you get to Atlanta, they pay supplements above the pay scale. In other words, you could go to Atlanta and make, some people make two and three times what they make other places. We're not, we're not worried about competing with Atlanta, well, it's not what we're asking. Uh, what we're trying to get is at least competitive with our neighbors, in other words, Floyd County, Whitfield County, Chattanooga, places like that. Um, what, what that loss resulted in, in terms of numbers, we essentially lost 40% of our attorneys in, in that 688 capacity. And I know I exploded y'all some numbers at the budget meeting, according to our tracker database, last year alone, we opened over 1,800, cases on over 1,800 defendants, and that's just in Walker County. Uh, if we were at full strength, we'd have six attorneys handling that, but we have three right now, so that's 600 cases each. We also had a couple of people this year out on extended leave, so essentially, we were trying to cover four counties, in addition to Walker, it's Catoosa, Chautauqua, and Dade Counties that we cover. For the majority of this year, we've been trying to cover those four counties with about nine people. So our, our people are struggling, uh, we are not dealing, we're not having the time to deal with cases that we need to. We're trying to focus our attention on the serious violent offenders, your murderers, your child abusers, but on it, to be completely honest, there's some cases we're not able to give the attention that we need, and that's because of our personnel. Um, to address this, last year, uh, the commissioners from each of the four counties met, uh, we were able to reallocate some of our funds last year. We basically sacrificed two full attorney positions to try to get our starting pay competitive with what they pay in Chattanooga and Floyd County, and we were able to do that. Uh, the first request this evening, uh, is to reallocate, that's actually not a reallocation, this is something that's already allotted within our current budget structure, to add an increase for people who have stayed with our office for five years, to try to incentivize people to actually stay with our office. We believe it's absolutely necessary, and it is already part of the current budget structure. Uh, the other request we have, uh, for this evening, uh, back in May, and I don't know if this makes me feel better or worse about the situation, but there are a number of other prosecutors offices across the state who have job openings, and we have both state-paid attorneys and county-paid attorneys. So our, our longer-term employees and our more serious, our more significant salaries, we put on state payroll, so the, so the taxpayers locally don't have to fund those. But, back in May, because there was an enormous surplus at the state level because of open vacancies, they paid a one-time retention supplement to all prosecution employees, and not all state agencies, just prosecution employees, and that was paid out to our state-paid employees in May. And what we're asking to do is out of our allocated, we have a, a large surplus out of our budget, uh, for this year because of all the open vacancies. In Walker County right now, our surplus appears to be well over $166,000, just for this year. So out of that surplus fund, we're, we're trying to match the one-time retention supplement for our employees, and if passed, we still would be returning well over $100,000 of, of county money that's, that's unspent. Um, I, I will note for y'all that our budget is funded not only by Walker County, y'all, y'all aren't having to pay the brunt of all of this. Uh, each county in our circuit pays a percentage of our overall budget based on overall population, that is based on the 2020 census, so Walker County's portion of this overall request is only 38%. So I have already been and met with the, the governing authorities and the boards of Dade, Catoosa, and Chautauqua Counties, they have all approved all of these requests, so y'all, y'all were last, and that's not because I saved y'all for last, it was a scheduling issue, I tried to actually get on earlier, but just due to scheduling issues, y'all ended up last. But what's happened in the meantime is the other three counties have funded and passed this request, so we're simply asking y'all, uh, to, to, for, for your part of the overall request. Uh, the, the retention supplement was paid out by Dade County in June, and in Catoosa County by July, in July, and, uh, we agreed that Chautauqua County would kind of wait and see what, what y'all did, and try to, try to hopefully pay together, but that's, that's the, the gist of our request. I would not, I'm not making this request lightly, and we try to be very, very mindful of, of the use of our taxpayer money, money. I'm, I'm just trying to hold the office together at this point, and that's, that's truly what I'm asking for.
Just to add to that, I have spent quite a bit of time with, with Kevin over the last couple of years, you know, working on budgets and their circumstances of personnel, and I have also talked with our other adjoining counties that are part of our circuit, and, you know, we've all been in agreement, this is something that's, that's needed and necessary, so just want to let y'all know that I, I do support this request, and, uh, think it's something that, that makes sense for our county. Y'all have any questions?
No, sir.
What's the amount that we're gonna be reallocating?
So the, um, so I guess the difference, okay, so it's $48,389.20 is our portion of that, is that correct?
That's the Walker, that's the Walker.
So Walker County, based off population, as Kevin mentioned, we're 38.3% of the circuit, and so everything that we do budget-wise with them is based off of percentage allocation, based off of the census every, uh, every 10 years. So our portion is $48,389. And so that money's already in their budget, they just need requests to move it within their, their budget, so it's not increasing their budget, they're still gonna return well over $100,000 in excess surplus back to the county even once that's done.
I would like to make a motion to approve this request.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, but Commissioner Askew, any further discussion with the board?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming tonight. Okay. Approval of the Office of Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Subgrant Award, uh, project name is our juvenile justice, uh, incentive grant, subgrant number Y258-023. You're back.
Hey, yes, we're here for our yearly meeting.
Feels like yesterday. Well, at least you're bringing some money with you.
Yeah, well, yeah, what? I'm Don Worley, this is Dick Burgess, uh, we run the Juvenile Justice Incentive Grant for Walker, Dade, Chautauqua, and Catoosa County. Uh, believe that the grant is for 140, it may be 140.
140.
Okay. I know they cut my, but, cause I, um, we consistently come in under budget, so they're like, well, you're not gonna spend it, we're not gonna give you, which is fine, that's a good amount. Um, we do the Thinking for a Change, and we do the Connections Northwest, uh, kind of a wraparound program, the Thinking for a Change program, we teach social skills, problem-solving skills, and cognitive self-change to juvenile delinquents in the four counties. Um, Dick, you wanna talk about Connections a little bit?
We basically, we help the kids that are on probation, uh, through juvenile court in all four counties and judicial circuit, uh, we help them fulfill the things they're supposed to do in probation, help with community service, if they're old enough and want employment, uh, we, we help with that, uh, we help connect them if they're needing to do their GED. I really love the Youth Assess Academy here, and, uh, we, we connect kids to those, those things, um, and we help them find things to pay restitution, you know, help them find, if they can't work yet, we help them find odd jobs, things like that, to, to pay off restitution if they owe it.
Uh, so the, the wraparound program's more of a boots-on-the-ground kind of thing, and the Thinking for a Change is more of a classroom kind of a setting, it's a 25 lesson, um, uh, curriculum that goes about, twice a week, for about 14 weeks there.
And a lot of the Connections part is keeping them in the community, so they can go to the class, and we're, we're trying to treat kids in the community instead of them getting committed to the state, because they go get committed somewhere down in South Georgia and come back to the same problems, and everything just starts over, so we're trying to, trying to help people where we live.
So this will be our 11th year, I believe, and we wanted to say how much we appreciate y'all's support, and we're asking for your support again this year.
So this is a federal-funded grant, it is $140,000, there are no required matching funds. Uh, the main reason that they are here tonight to present this to this board is Walker County's the fiscal agent for them to manage this grant. So this goes into our grant fund accounting system, and all of their expenditures and all are managed through our internal CFO and accounting department, and all their documentation and grant reporting is done by our office for them covering all four counties. And so, uh, I guess all 11 years, you've been, Walker County's been probably the fiscal agent, I know, all, the whole time I've been here, the whole eight years it has been.
Yes, sir.
So this is just really a renewal, even though they've, the federal government's cut its funding some, but, uh, this is just to approve that the county's gonna continue to manage this grant as part of our accounting and part of our audit process that we go through every year. So any questions?
No, sir.
So we have a motion to approve receiving and managing the grant for $140,000.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Thank.
Second, but Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all.
Okay, the next item we have is purchase order 2024-2433, in the amount of $38,777 to Winners Roofing for roofing work at the Schaffner Hall. Uh, this will be funding out of our 2020 splotch. Uh, the Schaffner Hall is the, uh, Rossville, it's the former Rossville High School bandroom. Uh, it's a super nice building, it is like a step back in time when you go into that facility, because it looks just like a bandroom from the, from the early 80s, and they take real good care of it. The Mid-South Orchestra practices there every week, and actually, John Johnson in the back is a member of that orchestra, and how many do y'all have, about?
About 75.
About 75 people go and practice, and they, they just really are outstanding. So it is time to put roof and guttering on that building. Uh, we did get two proposals, uh, we did receive one from a vendor that we use, uh, JBM Repairs LLC, uh, for the same scope of work, that proposal was $51,690. The recommendation is with Winners Roofing Company for the same scope of work, for a replacement of the TPO roof, uh, new eight-inch box gutters and six-inch downspouts, 15-year warranty, five-year on workmanship, is $38,777. So that is substantially less, we have had good experience with Winners on other projects, so it's my recommendation that we approve the purchase order 2024-2433 to Winners Roofing to replace the roof gutters and downspouts in the amount of $38,777 for the Schaffner Hall Bandroom, which is a, is a county-owned facility. Any questions?
And you, you didn't say this, but it's print, it's out of the 2020 splotch?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Anything else? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this purchase order?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, but Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is approved. Okay, next item on our agenda is for Commissioner comments, Commissioner Blake Moore.
Well, I will be first to say I have not messed with or destroyed any documents. Uh, next, I would like to thank our employees, still been hot, been brutal, guys rock, keep doing great work, thank you. Chairman, I assume you're gonna speak on the fire trucks?
Yes.
Since that's day-to-day. Um, Carlin, would you give us a brief update on foster mill, what your plan is with that?
Please come up to the microphone.
So, uh, the issues with foster mill from the industrial loop to the airport, that is a City of Lefet project, I am aware of it, um, we, Gottlieb and I, we've been working, going, trying to go, or going through the proper avenues to get that taken care of. Um, they were using that as a haul road, and in the beginning of everything, told them to keep it patched up, and then the repairs are supposed to be coming, I, I'm not sure, we're, we're in the conversations of all that. Uh, we did go out and put the signs up, we done the last patching that was out there. Um, the milling, that, that's what's gonna be required to fix it, that, that's gonna have to be deep mill patched with binder put back down in it and all of that. That's not necessarily an argument for us and the and the contractor. It's more us to the city and then the city to the contractor. So that's in the wheelhouse. That, I mean, that's been discussed and talked about and working through the avenues to try to get that handled.
But you're out of here without that.
Yes. Yep. That's been, been about two, two weeks, two and a half weeks, somewhere like that.
Can I just ask if they're on the schedule with the rest of Foster Mill drivers from the mountainous turn down?
Uh, that, I'm not, uh-
So this year, bud?
It is going to be done this year. Uh, our, our contractors are finishing up Mountain View subdivision probably by Tuesday. And then we most likely will be paving some more on the northern end. And then I don't want to get them down there on that until the, because then I, then I've got other conflicts, so.
Move all the equipment down there and start on the one end and still then have to come back, but, you know, it, it needs to be addressed.
It, it is, it's, it's on the list. It'll get done.
It's terrible.
Hmm, I, I agree. I've been down there a couple of times and so that's, that's where we're at with Foster Mill.
Thank you, sir.
I would like to supplement, uh, what Carlin said. Carlin did come through last Thursday. Uh, you know, I have the problem. I got a letter out that saying, uh, within a matter of hours to the, uh, city attorney for the city of Lafayette. Um, he responded to me, I want to say the next day. Uh, the city manager, uh, was on vacation, that's what I was informed. And that when the city manager returned, uh, that, uh, the city attorney would speak with him, uh, regarding the matter. We have put them on notice. Uh, it is our opinion, uh, my legal opinion, that, uh, they are responsible for that section of the road that they are using, uh, to run their trucks up and down. Uh, they, the, the reason that they're responsible is because the work that was being done is at the Lafayette Airport. And, uh, in some reform, they're having to relocate their runway, which is very expensive and involves, uh, a lot of trucks in and out with asphalt and, I'm sure, also removing, uh, debris. And so, uh, I believe that there's a provision in their contract, that being the contract between, uh, the City of Lafayette and the, uh, contractor, that the contractor's responsible for any, uh, damage, uh, that is caused as a result of, uh, their use of the road. These, these trucks are extremely, uh, heavy. Uh, by their nature, if they're running, uh, sometimes close to twenty-four hours a day. Is that correct?
They're, in the beginning of that work, they were hauling dirt that I know of for three weeks around the clock. And that's, that's a lot.
You know, that is a lot more than normal wear and tear, uh, on the road. And, uh, it will be our position that, uh, the city, uh, via their relationship, their contractual relationship with the contractor who's doing their work at their airport, uh, will be responsible for that. And it's, it's, uh, I mean, this isn't the, the first time. This isn't a novel, uh, legal, uh, theory. Uh, unfortunately, it's happened in other cities as well. Uh, like I say, there's even a contractual provision, uh, that addresses that. And, um, you know, our, our intention is to hold the City of Lafayette, uh, responsible and it's up to them. We don't have a direct relationship with their, uh, contractor, but we do look to the city to, uh, appropriately repair that. So I just wanted to, to provide you with that update as well. We, you know, we are moving forward on it.
Anything else? Commissioner Askew?
Oh, so, yeah, I took some notes. I want to hit a couple of topics. I, I did want to start out and, and I will, uh, go ahead and follow with Commissioner Blake Moore. Uh, to my knowledge, I, I've not, do not know of, seen, hear anything of any destroying of documents. Uh, the, I'll say this as well, addition to that, uh, as a district commissioner, we don't have access to, uh, documents that are, that are in the, uh, the commission office. The, the majority of the time, I'm saying that we don't have any access to them anyway. Uh, I save everything. So if you want to come to the house, I'll be glad to show you documents. My wife's mad because I, I, I don't, I'm just anal about it. So anyway, I wanted to make that clear. Uh, and I did want to, before I answer a couple of questions, I, I wanted to, uh, on my commissioner comments, I had, I had planned to just make sure that we all, uh, are very mindful of our schools starting, uh, all around the county. Uh, schedules change. We'll be kids out on the streets where they were, you know, school buses where they weren't. So let's just everybody be mindful of that for the safety of, of the children and public safety. So I want to say that. Uh, Ms. Carolyn, in, in reference to you, I'd like to, uh, I'll tell you that I'd like to, I'll sit down with you and look at any questions you have as well, because I may have some questions that I'd like for you to help me with too. So for you, Ms. Carolyn, I'd be glad to do that. Mr. Talley, uh, I, I agree one hundred percent, one hundred and fifty percent about the school board. And I have reached out and do know for a fact that legally, we do not have that authority. If we did, I can assure you that I would be one that would be willing to, uh, go out on a limb to, to, to doctor and work on that budget for them because they need some help on, on that.
Most of the states where I live, the county commission has-
Yes, sir. We, 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 we don't. We don't have that authority. They make the request and we don't have the authority to manipulate that. I have, I have looked into that. I, I promise. Uh, Robbie Tate, Foster Mill, got, they got you. And I, I do think that's moving forward. Uh, maybe we, maybe we can speed up some of that. Who knows? We'll, we'll try. Uh, Ms. Halsey, uh, the, the comments about the, uh, the ideals of how to track and how to get things on, onto a, a level, you know, I, I've, I've, I think we've all kind of talked about that a little bit independently, just in our minds, uh, after some of these situations have come up, that we do need just kind of streamline and look at. So thank you for the, the thought put into that and we, and I'm sure that we'll be looking at that in the future. Uh, and the wifi shouldn't be, that's, it should be something we should be able to get, get established. I, I'm assuming now, I don't know what the availability is and I'm not a, a high-tech wifi, wifi guy, so I, I'm assuming. Um, just real quick, I want to, I want to catch everybody that I can. Uh, Scott McNabb, um, you know, I, I, I do agree that there are some things that we probably need to look at in those documents that, after other information that we've looked at and we could always clear things up, that's always a moving, working document. So to say that it's a done deal, it's never a done deal, uh, in my opinion. Uh, I think it can be, it can be worked on. Um, as far as the lines on the tax maps, I, uh, I, I, you know, you're, you're a survey guy. Don't, don't, don't go by that stuff because, uh, you know, that, that, I think we're behind a lot of that stuff. I, I know we've been looking at real estate properties. I look at sometimes, they, they don't G and H, so you, you're familiar with that.
I just threw that meeting was a mention and it did.
Um, and, and, uh, it's funny, Jamie, on, on talking about that resolution, we, we did and, and I remember, I, I, I was asking for the date. Uh, that, that is what we try to do and we did, we have made a resolution to do that. We try to get that information out as soon as possible. I think by law, uh, the, the law, it doesn't put a restrictive time on it. It says as soon as you possibly can. So sometimes the, some of the information we have to wait on, there is a legitimate reason. Uh, some things, you know, that, that could be looked into. Um, um, as far as the coroner housing, I'll let the, the chairman speak to that. As far as the, the fire truck, I, I did, I do want to speak on that to, uh, Travis. Um, you're here, I'm going to get you my notes up. Um, the, yes, we are, there are some, some ideas being kicked around and different things being talked about that's not acceptable at the period. It's not acceptable. We, uh, and so we're going to be taking some actions in the very near future to start some corrective action in, in some different ways. So thank you for, for bringing that up. We, we are very aware of it, uh, and trying to, trying to work through that. Uh, let's see, let me make sure. I, I, I'm going to leave it with that. I will let, uh, if, and I'll deflect the, the Mr. Commissioner Hart, and I'm sure he can help us out with it, with the intent and the-
Yep, I'll talk to that.
Yes, that's, I want to let you handle that. So that, that's got it for me. And thank you for your participation. Thank you for the county employees and please watch out for the kids. Fit for me.
Mr. Hart?
So, Mr. Yates, not shredding any documents. You can put that on your TikTok page and tell them to call me if they can, okay? Okay, I'm good. Not shredding any documents. Tell them to call. County police, are you going to address that? Okay, got that. Okay. Everything else has been covered, so I will not restate it. I will talk about the one-point-two million dollars splotch. And I'll go back a little further than what I'm, you may want to hear, but I'll go back and cover the whole thing. So prior to twenty-twenty, I guess November twenty nineteen, the county citizens voted on a twenty-twenty splotch. And there was dollars in there for all sorts of things. Fire trucks, sheriff cars. And one of the things was the one-point-two million dollars for the Ag Center and for the county agent. It was kind of vague. I don't have it with me or I'd read it or rebate them. And I'll send you a copy of it, Jamie, if you don't have it. But it, it was pretty vague. So, but the original intent of a group of people was to build a new county agent's office in Rock Springs on the campus there. And I'm going to say it's a bad idea, but we met, I say we, we is, and I'll send you a list if everybody was at that meeting, Jamie, I have that list, but it involved everybody that has something to do in the Ag community. There were seventeen people there, people from the Young Farmers Group, people from the Tri-State Catamans, county agent was there, uh, county employees were there that, that worked with through Ag, and many others. And I'll send you that list. A lot of educators were there as well. And we sat down and brainstormed for two hours about how would you spend that money if it was yours? What's the best way to invest this money for agriculture in the county? Because as you know, agriculture is the leading industry in this county. And we came up with, hey, let's chop it in half, let's reinvest half of it into our new county agent's office, but let's not build a new office. Let's repurpose an office and affect, if we've got one building we can use, another that we might can use. So let's just set that aside for that. And let's set aside half of it for you to work at the Ag Center. And we broke those things out and just threw some pretty vague numbers at them. But they were numbers that could cover all that work. So that's where that came from. That's who they was. I presented that to the Board of Commissioners with a letter. They all nodded their head, yelled, let's work towards that. So we have been working towards that. Chairman, Chairman's been very helpful. Todd Byrne and his whole crew have been very helpful. And we're starting to process some of that work now. Mark is correct. We usually do get everything on the agenda prior to. I bet in, since we passed that resolution, I don't think we've added anything more than three or four times in those years. The reason this was added is because my fault. We were planning this work to be done in August because the Ag Center is totally booked for the month of September, trying to get all that work complete prior to September. And we just missed that. We added it to the agenda. We had three bids and we took the lowest bid. Somebody had done work with us for years. So that's where that came from. To answer one of your other questions, the county agent actually is paid by Walker County.
Not all of his salary, just a portion.
But just a portion of his salary. I don't know what that breakout is and I can get that for you. But every county in the, not every county in the state has a county agent. Some county agents manage more than one county. We're fortunate enough because of our size and because of our gate value being what it is, that we have our own county agent. And so we do everything we can to support that county agent because he's very helpful to the leading industry in our county. I'll send you all that information. I've, I've got it all on my computer. I want to say that last Tuesday, we had a big storm. Everybody's power was out. One-fourth of North Georgia Electric's power was out. I came home, our power had been out for two hours and my wife said, you're a county commissioner, can't you call somebody? And I said, well, no, I can't.
John Howard.
John. I saw Sheriff Wilson the next day. His power had been out for twenty-four hours. So I just want to give a shout out to North Georgia Electric. You know, I know Carlin works with them a lot. Those guys, you know, Jamie worked in that industry for a long time. Those guys get a lot of rocks thrown at them when the power's off. But the power's not off that often. So they did a great job getting it stood back up. And it's fascinating when you think one-fourth of their customers were impacted. Last thing I want to say, we lost an individual in our community this week. Jim's uncle, my great uncle, Guy Hope passed away. If you weren't in the farm community, you probably didn't even know him. But he was a lifelong farmer in the county for sixty-plus years he farmed. He died at age ninety-two, so we miss him greatly. And I think Robert knew his wife. His wife taught the house a couple of years too.
Fine, fine gentleman.
He really was.
We lost a really great man.
We did.
So to begin with, just want to thank our county employees. You work in the heat. I see you out. You're doing a great job. I try to throw up my hand or stop and tell you you're doing a great job, but you really are. And I appreciate all of your hard work. Mr. Yates? I have seen no shredding of documents, no malfeasance regarding records. Personally, I've held a license in this state through the Georgia Medical Board for twenty-nine years. And the last thing I would want to do is jeopardize my license and my profession by seeing, observing, have knowledge of any document malfeasance or shirking. Um, question was brought up about our, uh, county chief of police. Mr. Chairman will address that. Also, the question was brought up regarding, um, fire department vehicles at the shop. I will say that the chief and I have discussed this a couple of times recently. I do know that there is a system being worked on to be put in place to remedy that. I think Mr. Chairman's also going to comment on that. Uh, Robbie, I drove down Foster Mill last night, drive down it quite a bit. Not as much as you, but it's rough. It's very rough. And so, um, you know, based on what Carlin said, and I've spoken with Carlin about it previously, it is a little better now that the patch truck has gone down there. They're a little bit better. Not, you know, it didn't jar you quite so bad, but I, I get it and I appreciate it. And certainly we're going to get something done with that. So, um, Ms. Halsey regarding wifi down at, um, Center Post. Curtis Kriemer was the one who put the landline in down there. I'd spoken to him about it a couple of years ago. I'll give Curtis a call, see what we need to do regarding wifi. I agree, it needs to be done. Yep. And, um, last thing I want to mention, a positive note, I want to say great job, Robert, to you and your wife. Um, uh, last weekend, uh, SSA hosted a benefit tournament for the Floyd County Sheriff's Office to help fund Special Olympics, a great cause. And along with other vendors, fourteen thousand dollars was raised for the Special Olympics. So excellent work. Very good. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, tried to address several things here tonight. One thing that was mentioned was about, uh, by Mrs. Halsey about the rent money for Rossville. So the agreement that the board has, has approved does, uh, state in that agreement that Rossville has to use all of those revenue monies back into recreation. And it also put a request in there that every other month, that they provide the county a report of their revenue and expenses and how those funds are being allocated so that the county government can validate that their income from attendance, concession, whatever income comes to that facility is reinvested right there in Rossville back into recreation, uh, to go and help support the kids. Uh, and Commissioner Blake Moore's brought it before, there's a lot of kids up there. Uh, in order for them to be able to play, uh, have to be supported by scholarships to be able to afford the, you know, to cover the uniform cost and things, or they wouldn't be able to play. And so, uh, we're hopeful that some of those funds will be used for scholarships as far as supporting recreation. Um, Brian did mention about the, the county agent. I, I will say in our budget, there is a, a division in the budget for the county agent. It's toward the back of the general fund budget. So you can see the historical budgets and the breakout and the requests. Uh, but it does pay a portion of the county agent's, uh, compensation and also a portion of, I believe, I think, two office people as well.
Yep.
And that's something that's been ongoing, that had been a precedent, been in place in Walker County for quite some time. And there is a, uh, an agreement between the, the county and the, uh, University of Georgia.
UGA.
University of Georgia. But they, it's a kind of a quasi-type governmental agreement where, uh, the county provides the facilities, provides the upkeep of their, their vehicle, and then, um, the state processes and handles their benefits and they're on the state benefit program. Okay, the, uh, the coroner's office, uh, the coroner and I both come into office at the same time, in January first of twenty seventeen. Uh, historically, the, the previous coroner had a office at the complex in Ro, uh, Rock Springs, Chickamaug area where our road department is. We had a need to reposition that office to more center of the room, center of the building and closer to the conference room that's there. We set him up with a new copier printer, uh, new equipment from a computer standpoint, everything that he needed, filing cabinets, but he seldom uses it. But it is there, it's still there. He's got a key to it. He has twenty-four-seven access to it. And so it's his discretion if he desires to use that office or not. But it is center of the county. I know he's been hopeful. And we have actually spent some time looking. He would like to have an office, uh, in the Lefet area because that's where a lot of his other activities are. But it is center of the county and it is there for him. Um, shredding of documents. This is something that's very near and dear to my heart because when I came in January the first of twenty-seventeen- my heart because when I came in January the 1st of 2017, everything in the commissioner's office had been shredded. And I mean, everything. Every filing cabinet, every drawer, everything in there was empty except for some outstanding bills or payables was in the top left-hand drawer. Computer had been wiped. The only thing that was in the office, there is a few history-type books about Walker County and some preservation-type stuff that's still on the bookshelf. So, I know what it's like to come in into a dysfunctional situation and have little to no information. But they brought in a person that shredded, I understand, for about three solid weeks, every single day on a large commercial shredder. And so, that's why sometimes we don't always have documents. People get frustrated sometimes. They say, "Well, I did an open records request, and I'm looking for something back this far." If it's prior to 2017, we struggle finding documents sometimes. Sometimes there are things in the archives facility, and our archives manager is able to find those, but we, we struggle. So, I know what that's like, and I would never, ever, ever do that to someone coming in behind me. But I do have a shredder in my office that I use daily. And I have used it daily for years because I learned a real hard lesson probably about three years ago where we had a person that was coming to our meetings that was using racial slurs. And so, we were being put on the defensive. Chattanooga media got involved. We were trying to manage this situation. Nationally, there was a lot of unrest in a lot of big cities with racial issues. We were trying to avoid that. We had reached out to some of our African-American leaders in our community. Had them come and meet with us at the commissioner's office. Joe Leggie was doing a great job helping us formulate a press release and a message. And in collaboration, in private meetings with myself and Robert Wardlaw, Stacy Suddles, Beverly Foster, Stan Porter, and other key leaders like that in our community, we were collaborating and working on a joint message to the community and to do a press release with the media. So, there was a lot of renderings of a draft that we're marking up and looking at collaborating on. So, some of those draft copies that I didn't need anymore, I tossed them in the trash can. Well, at that time, the person that was cleaning the offices and doing custodial work come in and was annoying to me, was digging through my garbage every day. And they found those drafts. And it was nothing in there that we had to hide or shame or anything of issues because, again, we're collaborating with a community that's being adversely affected. And we're trying to keep peace in this community. But it wasn't for public consumption because we had a message that we jointly agreed to. And so, from that point forward, I made a commitment to myself to be very mindful not to throw anything in the trash can. Somebody can take and send me a card. Occasionally, I will get a card in the mail. I keep the card. I shred the envelope because it's not anybody else's business of a return address on an envelope if somebody sends me something. So, yes, I do shred things on a daily basis, but I'm also very mindful that I'm just one person, and there's a new leader coming in behind me, and I want to make sure they have everything they need in place. And so, one of the things we do, we adopted a system where we have shared documents on a shared drive that is backed up and stored in the cloud. So, a lot of times, I'll take documents and things that are very important and label those, put them in a shared drive that multiple people in administration have access to. And then, a lot of times, my copy of that document, if it's something that's not an original, yeah, I will shred it, but I know I've got an electronic copy of it that's stored in the cloud. It's much safer than sitting there on my desk or in a file cabinet. So, we also have a large container in one of our supply rooms where other staff members, it's a locked container by a third-party vendor, anything they have that needs to be shredded, they can just drop it in that container. I think it's once every couple of months or so, the shredding company comes by and picks those things up and shred. Another good example is the budget. When I work on the budget, I go through many, 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 many renderings or drafts of that budget because I got to get it to zero. And I got to try to accommodate as many things I have. So, I've got a stack on my desk, probably five to six inches high, of different budget renderings and drafts that at some point, I'll take and run it through the shredder because at the end result, what's the final budget and what's being presented is what makes sense. So, I'm not doing anything maliciously. And I assure you that when I leave that office, as much information as I have that can be organized will be available. And the only things that are being shredded are things that I don't see that I need to keep copies of or I have a, you know, a copy in electronic format. So, if anybody wants to do shredding, it's me.
Yeah, same way. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Next thing, Hal Gray with the police chief. Walker County is in a very unique situation that we are one of, don't hold me to this number, maybe eight or 10 counties in the entire state that still have the ability to have a county police. And so, we don't want to lose that because if we ever lose it, we may never, ever, ever get it back because the state doesn't want to issue authorizations for counties to have a county police. This board, and I agreed collectively, made the decision back a couple of years ago to downgrade any type of county police presence as much as we possibly could, to put our county police as much as we refer to as kind of on the shelf. But we do have a requirement that we, one, pretty much one requirement is we have to have a police chief, and they have to go every year for their executive hours of training. And so, this board, back on a previous resolution, made Hal Gray the chief of police, and he was also a full-time code officer. So, code officer work was probably 99.8% of his responsibility. And probably 2/10 of 1% of his responsibility was being the county police. That's how much work there was to do, based off the desire of this board that we're not out here actively running a police force per se, and we're not out here pulling people over per se. And so, as Hal was transitioning to be mayor of Rossville, you know, we had some, just kind of gentleman's conversation, "Hey, you know, we still got to have a mandated officer to do this." He said, "Yeah, yeah, we'll just keep it going. We'll figure this out. Not a problem." And so, we do have some more details to work out, but I even had a conversation this week with Hal. Everything's good. He had to go to that required training, so we didn't lose that status. But, you know, we, we will work out the compensation with him, but he's been great to work with, and everybody's in agreement in the board. We, I've had conversations with everyone individually several times about Hal, and he fulfills the need to, as a placeholder, basically. Okay, the, the fire department, one thing that we've dealt with, with the fire department and a lot of other departments, we've got a lot of older equipment. We, our fire department runs a lot of calls. We have been successful in buying some new pump trucks that we have on the road. The board approved seven new quick-response vehicles back a couple, three years ago and a couple of different purchase orders. We did receive three of those brand-new trucks, I think, come back around the January, February timeline of this year. Unfortunately, you can see them, all three, sitting up there at Station 1 in Rock Springs because we've not been able to put them in service. I know our command staff and our firefighters, it's been very frustrating because we've got brand-new trucks there, brand-new chassis and all, but there is a computer programming problem that our vendor, along with Ford's, been trying to work out for months and months and months. And Chief Hodges has been in multiple conversations and has even talked to the president of the company in working. So, we want to get those new trucks in service. We've got four more that have been on order for quite some time, but it's probably sometime even next year before we'll have those. Also, in the new proposed budget is to hire an additional staff person that we classify as like a level four to be able to work on more of our stuff in-house and have a person that can work on pumps and things that we're having to outsource to try to lower costs and to work through that. So, it is, it's been something we, it's been a grind that we're working through. I have authorized overtime for any of the guys that are willing to work overtime to try to catch up some of the backlog that we do have. And they are doing some of that, and hopefully, we can hire some additional staff. School board budget, again, it is very frustrating because one thing, as Mr. Talon mentioned, a lot of states, the county government approves a school board budget. And us being right here on the Tennessee-Georgia line, that's the way it happens in Tennessee. Your board of commissioners in Tennessee all approve the school board budgets. And so, the school boards in Tennessee do not have taxing authority. It's right that opposite here in Georgia where all public school systems have full taxing authority to set the millage rate, to set the school board budget. This board, we have no say, no input. There's no collaboration. They're completely separate from us, like as much separated as another city. So, same thing with the cities in the county. We don't engage in their budget. They don't engage in our budget. They set their millage rate. So, in Georgia, every city, every county, every school board has their own taxing authority. Okay, the Wi-Fi down at Center Point Community Center, this has come up a couple of times. As you know, the cell phone issue, having reliable, fortunately, is the grant that we received with the state, working with.
Windstream.
Windstream, thank you. They are running fiber down into that community because that community is one of our underserved communities with fiber. And so, that build-out by the contract's supposed to be completed this year by year-end. So, you'll, you've seen a lot of fiber going up in rural communities. So, communities like that that have struggled with cell phone coverage, also over in Villanow and places up on Lookout Mount that have suffered, they're going to be able to have gig-speed fiber. As soon as they get it connected and tested, they'll be able to have gig-speed fiber connection from going from basically like a dial-up connection to gig-speed, be pretty phenomenal. So, that's all working in that grant. Okay, yeah, resolutions in our agenda information. That's something that, that we take very serious because, number one, I don't like to put something on the agenda that the public hasn't seen nor this board hasn't seen. I don't like to bring any surprises up. When I came into office, the agendas were laying on the table when you walked in the door. There was not an agenda that was published anywhere. We changed that. And so, we changed it. We were, I think, we were publishing it a couple of days when I was sole commissioner, a couple of days before the meeting. When the board come into play, they needed more time to look at that. And so, we backed that up where we were almost a week ahead of time. We're one of the very few governments that do that. And I'm proud of that. And it takes a lot of work to make that happen because what happens, when we finish this meeting on Thursday, by Monday and Tuesday, we're already working on the next agenda. And by Wednesday, we're emailing these board members a working draft copy of that with as many attachments that we have for them to look and see if there's anything missing or anything we need to do. They can, can email. And then, by Friday, we're publishing that agenda. So, it turns very, very fast. And so, we have a few times over the last three and a half years, we have amended the agenda at the time of the meeting to add something last minute. We work real hard not to put anything on there that is controversial or like we're sneaking something in. But on the HVAC units, we actually were seeking four competitive quotes. And we had gotten the quote in like two days before the meeting, so the agenda, we got that last quote in. And so, I emailed those quotes to each board member, gave them a summary of what we were looking at. And due to the ordering of the equipment and the timeline, and then looking at our window of schedule of opportunity where we're closing the Ag Center for three weeks to do repairs and upgrades to that facility. So, basically, we're shutting down the air conditioning system for three weeks to make that happen. So, to make all that come together, I told the board, I said, "We're going to need to amend the agenda to put that on there." And we had four proposals, and this board elected to go with the lowest of those proposals.
I think there was three, Mr. Chairman. Wasn't there not?
Three or four. I may be mistaken. We had three or four proposals.
They were competitive, yeah.
But we do have those. And so, we've had other times where we've had stuff come up, and we said, "No, let's, let's wait. Let's don't put that on there. Let's push that out." There has been a few times on some grants, many of these federal grants that come down, we have a very short window of time. But as many of those, as you see, we don't require local match or the match is coming from some other source. So, we have done it on a few grants on occasions. Very excited about the work at the Ag Center of getting those upgrades made to that facility. We're also painting the exterior of that building as part of our three-week shutdown on that facility. Because when you look, as Commissioner Hart said at the schedule, September is packed out at the Ag Center for all different types of agricultural activities in the month of September. Okay, the next thing is an update. What we're referring to is Adventure Park there on Salem Road in Rossville. That is moving forward. All of the engineering work is done. Our engineering firm has put out the bid package to do the site work for that. So, that is moving forward. We hope to be able to break ground up there before the end of the year, and hopefully, that project will be completed by, the goal has been Memorial Day weekend of 2025. So, that's where we had the 2.2 million dollar grant from the state, which were some federal funds. And the board of commissioners agreed to put another $500,000 with that at a previous resolution. So, that project is moving forward. And I want to thank Joe Leggie. He's done a lot of work behind the scenes on that project and working with the vendors. And he's learned a lot about playgrounds and splash pads. So, so, he's done a real good job. He's very organized. So, I really appreciate all that you've done with that, Joe. Okay, I think that was the main points that I had. Is there any reason for an executive session?
Y'all still have any questions?
We'll do some additional follow-up. Those are the ones I made notes on. Did you have something else?
I had something I wanted to add.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Pertaining to a question, it was something I wanted to add. Something that you kind of sparked this in my mind when you were talking about the question that was posed by Mr. Yates about the shredding and all. And you were going through, you know, how that you were left, you know, with everything shredded and wouldn't do that. Well, and I, and I don't believe that you would either, but I, I feel that, you know, we were asked to state that we hadn't and wouldn't be involved in that. And so, but what I, what I want to ask is, as the vice chairman for this, for this board, is for your, and you have, there's no reason other than that I want to ask this because I want it to be public. It is, we're 90 days out of a transition. And like, as you said, when, when the new administration comes in, you want everything to be there for them at their hands. I would ask and ask this board to support that as you get closer along, would ask you to work closer and closer with our chair-elect and not just wait till the last day and hand the keys over, but, but to try to share some of that knowledge and some of your, your system so that we're, so as we get closer, we've got your.
Yes.
We have, and we have discussed it. I just wanted it to be out here in the public because we have, and you've given me that 100%. And you, and you've done what you said. I just wanted the people to know that as well, that we're working hard for a very smooth and, and, and level transition so that our new elected chair can come in to a better situation than, than you did.
That's correct. Yes.
All right, that, that's my last.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, sir. Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second? Have a second. But Commissioner Blakemore, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.